Perhaps death was not ready. It was not ready. So, and as we trust God to show us how to gain stature. Can you hear me back there? You can hear me? Alright, can you hear me? Can you hear me? So, we're going to be trusting God to show us. How can you build your engine? That's what we want to learn today. How can this, your small body, you know when you're a young person? People classify you. You know, sometimes even adults can classify you. What do these young people know? They're not saying it out of, they're not being malicious. Generally, there's some degree of experience that will come with age. But, we read in scripture yesterday, it said, "Let no one despise what?" Your youth, Abi? But what? Be an example. Yes. So, if they will not despise your youth, you have to gain stature and gain capacity to the point that you become an example. You become a beacon. You know what a beacon is? Like a lighthouse. You know what a lighthouse is? It's usually found at the seashore, Abi? And they put it on, it's really high up. So that when the ship, when the captain is coming on the ship, he can see where he wants to dock. Do you understand? He knows where he's targeting. As he's calculating his coordinates. And knowing how, because there's no road on the sea, here you know. There's no road. But they must be able to get their exact location and be able to target where they are going. So when they see the lighthouse, when they are close to the shore, when they see the lighthouse from afar, they can go, "Okay, this is where we're going." So you should be an example. And we'll go very quickly into it. We're in D now, according to our outline. So like I said, we will not be reading all the scriptures, but we are trusting God that the Spirit of God will expand to us what He wants us to know in this study. I want us to read Galatians 2:20. I think Galatians 2:20 is a very key scripture in this section of the Bible study. Galatians 2:20. Galatians 2:20. If you are there, you can read. It's a popular scripture. "My whole self has been crucified with Christ; it is no longer I who live; but Christ lives in me. So I live in this earthly body. My whole self has been crucified with Christ; it is no longer I who live; but Christ lives in me. So I live in this earthly body by trusting in the Son of God, who loved me and gave himself for me." Very much. We're also going to be reading 1 John 5:4. 1 John 5:4. And they will discuss this number 1 and number 2. 1 John 5:4. 1 John 5:4. "For whatever is born of God overcomes the world; and this is the victory that has overcome the world, our faith." That 1 John 5:4 says, "Whatever is what? Born of God does what? Overcomes the world." So if you want to overcome intimidation, if you want to overcome intimidation, the starting point is what? Being born of God. That point says, "Be of a noble birth in Christ; be born again." Whatever is born of God is what has the capacity to overcome the world. They say that lion or they born goat. Abi? If you are a son, a child of the one who is the lion of the tribe of Judah, you will have the capacity to overcome. So the starting point is your relationship with God. Are you born again? Have you come into a noble birth? Have you come into a noble birth? Can we find you in Christ? Can we find you in Christ? Bible says whoever is in Christ is a new creature. Abi? He's not the person that was, that's another thing. He's not that person that was born like Gideon, that was born in the list of his family. He's a new creature. He takes on a new identity that makes impossibilities possible. That makes you able to do great things. You understand? So, that's number 1. If there's anybody who has not made decision to follow Jesus here, I think you should strongly consider it. Because you cannot overcome intimidation if you have not come into that birth. And it is what is born of God that will overcome the world. So, Galatians 2:20 is explaining that second point. Somebody should read number 2 for us, do you want?
Yes.
Number 2. "Become confirmed to the image of Christ, your true life."
So, when we are born of God, we also have to become conformed to the image of Christ, which is our true life. And the Galatians 2:20 we read. It says, "For I am crucified with Christ, Abi? Yet I live. But the life that I live, I live by what? I live by faith in the Son of God." So, there are 3 steps into being conformed, conformed to the image of Christ. I want us to read one scripture before we go to the 3 steps. Psalm 82:6. Psalm 82:6. That confirms that lion or they born goat, Abi? Go to Psalm 82:6. Okay. "I have said, 'Ye are what? Gods.' All of you who are what? Children of the Most High." So ye are gods. If you want to overcome the world, you have to be born of God. So what are the steps that can make me conform to the image of Christ in my life? How does my life begin to conform into the image of Christ? The first step there is beholding. And it says, "Knowing by revelation all the realities of the cross. It is no longer I that lives, but Christ that lives in me." You know, if you look at Romans 6, chapter 3, Romans chapter 6 rather, verse 3, verse 6, verse 9. Maybe I should read from here so that it should be really fast. You can open your, you are there already? "Or do you not know that as many..." "Know that as many of us as were baptized into Jesus Christ were baptized into his death?" "Into Jesus Christ were baptized into his death." Yes. Then verse 6. "Knowing this that our old man was crucified with him, that the body of sin might be done away with, that we might, that we should no longer be slaves of sin."
So it means that knowing this, that I was crucified with Christ, it also means that I'm no longer a slave to what? That's what verse 6 is telling us.
"Knowing that Christ has, having been raised from the dead, that is no more. Death no longer has dominion over him."
Death no longer has what?
Dominion. You know, people ask questions of how do we overcome sin? How do we, how do we begin to live a life that is consistently, that is consistently in victory over sin? I think the answer is in these 3 verses. And you see, you see that word, "Know ye not." Don't you know? Don't you know that when Christ died, you were included in him? That old nature. That old nature. If you want to, if you want to be free from intimidation, if you want to arise against all odds, against all intimidation, one of the things that will make your engine big, you know, we talked about small body being gained in, Abi? One of the things that will make, that will help you gain stature is the understanding that you have been crucified with Christ. So it's a revelation matter. It's a revelation matter. And when God reveals to us that this me, once I give my life to Christ, this me, this life that I have, is a new one. The old me. I'm not trying to kill the old me. You know, there's a difference. I'm not trying to kill the old me. I understand by revelation that the old me has died and I accept it to be true. And I begin to live my life by the Spirit of God that now lives in me. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? Can you relate with what I'm trying to say? So it's a revelation issue. Some of us have not entered into that revelation. Let me give you an example. When I was, when I just gave my life to Christ, but before I gave my life to Christ, I used to tell lies a lot. Why? I never wanted to get into trouble. I was a teenager. I gave my life to Christ as a, as a young person and then rededicated my life to Christ as a teenager. I used to tell lies because I didn't, I didn't like, want to get in trouble. So, if I had done, I was, well, I was, I was easy to raise. I didn't like getting into trouble. So if they say, "Don't do something," I stay away from it. But if eventually I do it and I don't want to be punished, I tell lies. At some point, by the time I gave my life to Christ and by virtue of the tiny revelation I had, I, it became impossible to tell lies. Do you understand? The nature that used to lie had been crucified with Christ. So that's just, that's an example to get us going. So B says what?
B, believe in your own, in your new identity in Christ. Galatians 2:20.
Yes.
And work in the reality of this truth.
Just like I said. So believe it. So the Bible says, "I have been crucified in Christ, believe it." Reconcit to be true. You know that place gold red? It says, "Recon." Do you know what is recon some? I consider that this thing has been done. I accept it to be true. And then it influences what I do as I'm going forward. I begin to walk in the reality of this truth. I begin to conduct myself in the reality of this truth. I conduct myself knowing that that's my nature that has affinity for sin. That my nature that has affinity for self has been crucified with Christ. I believe it to be true and I begin to walk in the reality of this truth. And then C says what? "Daily submit yourself to God as a what? Living sacrifice." Somebody should read Romans 12:1. Jeremiah 1. Romans 12:1.
"Therefore I urge you..." "Therefore I urge you brothers, in view of God's mercy, to offer your body as living sacrifice, only and pleasing to God. This is your spiritual act of worship."
So, having, having reconciled, I don't know if that English is correct. Having accepted to be true that my old nature is crucified with Christ, then I daily what? Submit myself to God as a living sacrifice. There's a scripture that says, "We should yield our members as instruments of what? Righteousness." So I begin to walk daily yielding my members as an instrument of righteousness. And then the D says, "Deal with the strong gold of death." Do you know what that means? You know, when there are some sins that have not become strong gold yet. But if there's something that is a strong gold, you know how you know? You cannot even control how and when you commit the sin. You would have done it before you realize. Do you understand? Sometimes, when you yield yourself to sin, often and often. That's how some people become pathological liars. Because they've lied so much, a demon has come to supervise their line. That's what we mean by strong golds of death. The death we are talking about now is not physical death though. It's the death that was in the scripture that says, "There is therefore now no condemnation for those who are in Christ Jesus; for the law of the spirit of life has set you free from the law of sin and death." You know that scripture? Where is that scripture? Somebody should look for it for us so that we have a reference for it. Uh, "There is therefore now no condemnation for those who are in Christ." Love this. There are 2 laws that are operating. There's the law of sin and death. And then there's law of the spirit of life in Christ Jesus. So when you have, you are inside a perpetual sin that you cannot control, there may be a need to deal with strong golds. If you want to walk in a life that is triumphant, that will not be intimidated. For instance, I'm going to be very frank. Some of us may be into sexual sin. Some of us may have started masturbating and it becomes a strong gold such that you cannot control it. Do you know? Am I speaking to the air? Or you can relate with what I'm saying? Hello? You can. Or some people will tell lies and the lie has become a part of them. It has become something they no longer able to control. They have yielded, Romans 8:1, yes. Romans 8:1. They have yielded that, that part of their lives. The enemy has taken over. So there's a need to do what? Deal with the stronghold. And we do this by what? Faith in the blood. Can somebody read 1 Peter 5:9?
1 Peter 5:9. "Resist him firm in your faith, knowing that the same experience of suffering is required of your brother who throw out the world."
So it says, "We should resist the devil how? Firm in what? Firm in what? Your faith." So if you are stuck in that kind of thing, there's something that is a besetting sin. You know, in Christian, in Christianity, we call it besetting sin sometimes. Something that is a sin, you can't just shake it off. You have tried and tried and tried and tried, you can't shake it off. Then you resist him what? Firmly in the faith and by the blood. Then there's a, there's, there may be a need to regain that ground by the blood of Jesus. That's why some people may need a deliverance session where you will take back that lost ground from the devil. Do you understand what we are saying? Do you understand what I'm saying? So some of those strong goals need to be dealt with. If you have any such that you're struggling with, it's not a problem. You just need to get the understanding of who you are in Christ and wage a warfare. You know, you can do self-deliverance, it's possible. I hope you know. If you understand what Christ did on the cross for you and you understand that the blood of Jesus is able to take away, is able to break any covenant, is able to sever any cord between you and the enemy, then you can be free. Praise the Lord. I hope I'm not talking to myself. I hope we're all here. Okay, so number 3. Somebody will read number 3 for us. Number 3. We've talked about how to overcome intimidation. That's what we are saying, Abi? And what are, what are the things we've said about how to overcome intimidation? Let me pass the mic. What have we said so far?
Just to be sure, I'm not talking to myself. What was the first thing we talked about? If you don't know what to say, pass.
The first thing we talked about was being born of God. Because it is he that is born of God. Okay. The first thing we talked about was being born of God. That is everyone, anyone that is born of God that can overcome the world.
So we're talking about the fact that we have to be conformed to the image of Christ. So we're talking about the fact that we have to be conformed to the image of Christ. I say we're referring to the fact that we have to be conformed to the image of Christ, beholding.
Then you not mentioned the, how to be conformed in Christ. So one of the steps are beholding.
The fact of, a part of confirming, of confirming to the image of Christ said, when you're talking about the fact that sometimes you might have some besetting sins and things like that that might be affecting you, that you have to yourself decide, "Okay, I will not do this thing." As in, "When I came Christ, I cannot, I can no longer do this kind of thing." So you can pray for yourself, ask God and stop. Or you can, and you talk about self-deliverance, that it doesn't have to be, once you understand your identity and how you, where you stand in Christ, it saves us from a lot of sins that we do.
Yes, yes. So, talk about strong gold. There are some sins that have become strong goals and that can lead to spiritual death. So we should be mindful of them so that we can kill them.
So I see that for the strong goals, like I said, one thing I want to emphasize is there will be a need to take a stand against that ground the enemy has taken. Do you understand? For those strong goals is no longer you. There's an external force. There's a demon supervising it. So, there's a need to, by revelation and by the blood, break those strongholds through prayer deliberately. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? It's not just decide to change. People that are under strong gold, they've decided plenty times. But they found out that their decision does not hold water. Do you understand? So you need to enforce what has been done on the cross by faith in the blood. Do you understand? And reclaim that ground through prayer. Sometimes you can pray for yourself. Other times you need someone to pray over you and agree with you to break that stronghold. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? Uzozai, you want to say something?
Let's say that we should live in the reality of the fact that we are now born again, standing in God.
Alright. So just to also emphasize, it's like, the devil, the devil does not, Bible says, "The devil comes to steal, to kill and to destroy." So if he sees that there's space, you know, sin can open a door for the enemy. And then it will become death when the enemy takes over that door and oversees it and sits on it to begin to exert influence on your life. Do you understand? So when you want to deal with strong goals, what you are doing for devil, you are showing the devil the door. Where sir, this thing is not your own. I've been bought with a price. I've been redeemed by the blood of Jesus. This ground is not your own. And the devil is very, very stubborn. But you have to resist him what? In faith. Are we together? Until by the blood of Jesus, you regain back that ground that the enemy has taken. I hope I'm making sense to you, Pius. Okay, so the next one is what? Number 3. Pius, read for us. Read number 3 for us.
"Be filled with the Holy Ghost and work strong in the Spirit, empowered and led by the Spirit. Spiritual strength and perception is the major advantage we develop this through."
Life is spiritual. There's nothing that is, that is as it is sin. Okay? You see, you say you want to overcome intimidation. For instance, if you're in the workplace, you want to overcome intimidation. Those people that are intimidating you, there's a spiritual backend to what they're doing. There's some people believe that, "Hey, I'd not, I'd not hurt anybody. Nobody will hurt me. I'm doing my own. Nobody was my own in your own." It's some people believe that once I, you know, when I do the things the right way, nothing negative will happen to me. The doors will open for me on merit. Sima. And sir, even in developed worlds, so, quote unquote, you say there's no merit in Nigeria, Abi? There are strong goals. There are spiritual backends that supervise physical thrones. Do you understand? There are spiritual forces that supervise physical thrones. So you want to overcome intimidation, you need to build your spirit. You want to be a thought leader. You want to be a leader in a sector. You need to build your engine. Because the people you are going to go and meet, they have Babalahu that they are going to. Just take it. Is it in academics? Is it in the civil service? Is it in, in, in media? Wherever. The people we are going to butt heads against, they have a... they have a spiritual backend. But we Christians, we are the ones that refuse, we feel that everything, I know there's no need, where everything is just normal. Just do the right thing, you will get the results. It's a lie. So it's, just to emphasize the need to be filled with the spirit of God and work strong in the spirit. You want to avoid intimidation, want to overcome intimidation, you need to what? Work strong in the spirit. This is your greatest resource as a young person. If you want, you see, there are, systems have ceilings. I'm sure you have heard that some lecturers are in a cult. If you want to rise from one level to the other, you need to break a ceiling. Why? Some people are dead, they don't want you to come in. And they have spiritual backup. They are no bonnie. Or they have Babalawo. So you want to rise, you need to be strong in what? In your spirit. So how can we be strong in the spirit? We talk about spiritual disciplines. And the first one is there, is called Pumelin's, "Taming the fleshly appetite." You need to rise above your flesh. Sleep. For many of us, sleep is a problem. How many of you like to sleep? Me, I like sleep. Raise your hand if you like sleep. I like sleep. But I realize that my destiny is going to enter the water if I continue to sleep the way I want. I need to build spiritual discipline that will deny me of my sleep. How many of you like ice cream? Like ice cream? Like food? I would like food. Chi mama. See, I should raise that once. You like food, but I have to deny myself for food because I need to fast. I want to build spiritual muscle. I must be able to say no to sleep. I must be able to wake up and pray. See, people that are in high, in, in, in places of influence that are on thrones, many of them don't sleep well. In fact, there was a time I went to research. People that are very rich. Do you know what? They wake up before all of us. Their night season, they use it to determine what is happening during the day. This, there's this big billionaire that died, Wigu. Do you know him? Somebody was, his, a very close assistant was talking about him. He said that there was a time he entered this room, that the guy wakes up to think. Just wake up to be thinking. So if you like sleep, you can build spiritual muscle. That's the truth. You want to be anything for God, you want to attain anything to the glory of God, there are people already there. So if you want, you need to build spiritual stature by fasting, by praying. If you will pray well, your sleep will be affected. If you will pray well. I'm not talking plus Jesus minus Satan, plus Jesus minus Satan, plus Jesus minus Satan, amen. We're talking consistent, heartfelt, deep prayer that will touch heaven. The kind of prayer that connects your heart to your Father. It takes a while because your flesh is in the way. Do you understand? So by fasting, by vigil, by prayer. Let's read 1 Timothy 4:7 to 8, just to, you know, uh, describe to us what that point is really telling us. 1 Timothy 4:7 to 8.
But reject profane and old wife, wives' fables and exercise yourself towards godliness.
Exercise yourself what? Towards godliness. There's, there's an exertion. There's an exertion. You can't have the same results. Somebody who wakes up 4:00 AM to pray every day, reads his Bible. Do you understand? Listens to correct messages. Do you understand? Comes to church, is serving in church. You can't compare the person's results with somebody that sleeps 12 hours every day. Even academically, it will not compare. Are we together? So the next point is growing in knowledge. Growing in knowledge. Bible verse that says, "Grow in the grace and the knowledge of the law, of our Lord and Savior." Growing in spiritual knowledge. You know, yesterday during the, um, mission challenge, we need to know doctrine. Young people need to know doctrine. You need to know your Bible. If a Muslim comes to discountenance the word of God, do you have an answer? Do you understand the basic doctrine of your faith? If a Jehovah Witness comes to rubbish the Bible, can you have an answer for him? Why? You don't know your Bible. How many of you have finished your Bible in a year before, ever before? Ever before? Or you have attempted. Okay, you finished your Bible, finished your Bible, you finished your Bible. Or you have attempted and you failed. You've attempted, you've attempted, you've attempted. Then you need to, you need to give it another try. You need to give it another try. You need to grow in knowledge, that's spiritual knowledge. Need to grow in, you need to select those teachings that are sound, that have sound doctrine and listen. Bible says your teachers will not be few. You need to study the word of God. You need to remember the anointing of a teacher that you carry. And the word of God will begin to open to you. Then you also need to grow in what? Temporal knowledge. Normal knowledge. Okay. Let me ask you, Jomo. What area are you looking at that you feel that is an, is a, is an area of specialization for you? What would you want to do? If it's computer, tell me which area, tell me.
Uh, computer science, UIUX.
UIUX.
UIUX, yes.
Okay. How many ebooks have you read on UIUX?
As of now?
As of now?
Five.
Five, okay. How many videos have you watched on UIUX?
Just one.
Just one? How many times have you attempted programming UIUX?
Three.
Three times. You want to be proficient in something. You need to gain mastery. Some of us here cannot use Microsoft Word very well. Or Excel. And you say you have computer literacy. Can I use Excel very well? Can I draw graphs on Excel? Can I compute formulas on Excel? Okay. Can you use Microsoft Word to, to edit something? Can you track changes on Microsoft Word? You want to go somewhere, you read about it, you read. Even if you are 13, you want to be a doctor. Read. How many doctors, prominent doctors have you read about? Do you understand? How many biographies have you read? In line with your area that you feel God is sending you to? How many YouTube videos? You spend time, we spend time a lot on social media, we're scrolling, scrolling. But how many YouTube videos, you want to be a doctor? How many YouTube videos about medicine have you watched? The people you are competing against, they are beating you in the game. And we need more Christians who will represent Jesus on the mountains. Sometimes we Christians were lazy, were spiritually lazy. We are also temporarily lazy. We will not pray, we will not study. You want to be good in an instrument. I was telling my son, he plays the keyboard. I read that, you know, Phil, who knows Phil Driscoll? No, Phil Driscoll is even far. He's a Christian. He gave Nathanae Basie his trumpet. Did anybody read that? I read, I knew Phil, my dad had CDs of Phil Driscoll. So you know that he's not young. Phil Driscoll, I don't know whether now, used to practice 16 hours on the trumpet. Hello, you heard it right. I didn't say six, 16. Phil Driscoll is far. Femi Kuti. You know, Fela Son, Abi, Femi Kuti used to, he plays 12 to 16 hours on his instruments. So I was telling him, you want to play keyboard. Mommy, I want to be like Nathanae Basie. Man of God, you try not to play 30 minutes without getting distracted. So we need to grow in knowledge. Spiritual knowledge. Know your word. Know the Bible. Praise the Lord. So let's move really fast. Prayer and worship. Prayer and worship. Do 20. Build up your most holy faith. Praying where? In the Holy Ghost. Praying where? In the Holy Ghost. If there's something that builds your spiritual form. Builds is like, you know, when you're jimming spiritually, when you're praying the Holy Ghost, that's what you're doing. Is spiritual jimming. Some of these things, all these things we are saying, you are spiritually lifting weights. You are jimming. You are jimming for the day that you will confront intimidation. You are getting ready. Let me share a personal experience. I've had someone, the person is not a traditional leader in, on those states. I had a dream over, in my office, I had a dream where he came to me and looked at me like this. You know when you want to scare someone? And he was, in fact, in that dream, he was talking, "You." "You." And the next day in the office, the same thing played out. I was just by the dispenser and he was passing by the corridor. And he came and he looked at me. And did like this. Another person. Just to show me that I'm the one. Hello? He's always a traditional leader in these states, you know that. Yes. You are going head to head against systems of corruption. Systems that have been ceded to the devil. So you need to what? Build yourself up. Prayer and worship. If you can't pray, start with worship. Until you gain, you know what? Prayer doesn't usually start with, it doesn't start that you'll be feeling it though. It starts like, oh, I'm tired. You pray like, how many of you have prayed five minutes and it felt like it's one hour? That's not happened before. You pray for five minutes, I just, yeah, Jesus in my prayer, I've prayed God. I just, it's just five minutes I've spent. But what do you do? You keep at it. You keep at it. You keep at it. You keep at it. You keep at it until your spirit is awakened. Are we together? Then meditation on the word of God. We talked about meditation yesterday. Meditation on what? The word of God. You have audio Bible, plug your ears. One thing I do when I'm driving to work. So either worship or I'm listening to audio Bible. Somehow, somehow, the words just begin to stick. Many of us have phones. Or we, we do too much Instagram. We need to convert some of that social media time, myself inclusive anyway. Need to convert some of that social media time into what? Into spiritual investments. It's garbage in, garbage out. What you don't have, you cannot give. You see, when you cross a level spiritually, you will know. And the people around you, we know. If, I don't know if you notice, if you cross, if you gain spiritual strength and you have prayed and you know that something has changed inside me, somebody will come and ask you for counsel. Or they will say, "Go and lead prayer." You'll be wondering, ah, you say you put, you not see me before me? It's because there's a feedback. It flows out. Are we together? Alright, so another, the big part is what? Learning spiritual discernment. Learning spiritual discernment. Bible says that by reason of use, we have our senses sharpened. Now, many of us don't know how to hear God. It's not a problem. But you can grow in it. You can grow in it. You know how to grow in, you know, when you have a baby, like by the time the baby is born, the baby can recognize the mother's voice. I hope you know. There's the, the, yeah, the, the sense of hearing from three weeks is working. But the baby cannot decipher what I'm saying. If I say, "Stand up," does the baby understand what I'm saying? But I have an almost two-year-old that if I say, "Stand up," he will stand up. Why? He has started to discern what I'm saying. Apart from knowing my voice. Bible says, "My sheep hear my voice and a stranger, they will not follow." Are we together? It means that they, you know, the Fulani people, it's just, it's just like that though. Have you seen Fulani people driving their, you see they make some clicking sound? Someone says, "Shh." Or they, they, they click their tongue. They've trained their cows to actually know their voice. So as we grow, we're supposed to also grow in discernment. Because you will make tough decisions. You want to arise, you will make tough decisions. You must, you need to have information. For instance, you are going for a meeting and some people already have settled the meeting the night before in a, in a bar, in a bar or in a nightclub or in a shrine. They've already discussed this. You are just coming to do formality. But you as a Christian, you have no discernment. You don't have understanding. Sometimes they use you as a pawn to achieve their own goals. Are we together? So that's why we need to learn discernment. Then we need obedience and devotion to God's will. Obedience and devotion to God. Let's read this one. Hebrews chapter 10, verse 7. Pius.
Verse 7. Then I said, "Here am I. It is written about me in this scroll. I have come to do the will of my God."
I've come, you know, I think KJV say, "I've come in the volume of the books that was written about me." To do what? To do your will. To do your will. I realize that if, if God will elevate you, if God will elevate you, your own will must be kept aside. It's a spiritual principle. If your will is still in the picture, you are not ready. You are not ready. If you are not surrendered, if you are not broken, you still want to have your way, you are not ready. But the moment you switch and say, "Thy kingdom come, thy will be done," then you are ready. The moment you switch in your attitude and say, "Lord, it's not about me, it's about you. Where you send me, I will go. I forget about myself and I stand to do your will." Something will do what? Will shift and doors will open. Praise the Lord. So the deep part is working by faith and walking in love. Love is very important in our kingdom. Walking in love. There's no room. There's no room for bitterness. Walking in love. Walking in love. Galatians 5:6. Let's read that really quick. Somebody go there very fast. Galatians 5:6. Galatians 5:6. For we through the Spirit eagerly wait for the hope of righteousness by faith. For. That scripture talks about walking by faith. There's another one that talks about love. That talks about love. Let me quickly search for it. I think it's 1 Thessalonians 1:3. Our time is fast spent, but we'll see how God will help us. Okay, yes. Let me read from here. 1 Thessalonians 1:3. I know it's hard, it will soon be done. Sorry about that. He says, "Remembering without seizing your work of faith, labor of love, who is there with me?" I hope you are opening your Bible. 1 Thessalonians 1:3. Remembering without seizing your work of faith. Whatever work we are doing is by what? Faith. Labor of love and patience of hope in our Lord Jesus Christ in the sight of God our Father. So these are two major things that under, under guard our spiritual work that help us gain spiritual muscle. Praise the Lord. So what does number four say now? After we have gained spiritual disciplines, what does number four say? Grow in your experiential knowledge of God, just like David did. He killed a lion and he killed a bear. Grow in your experiential knowledge of God. God is real. Engage with God because he is real. Invite God to your everyday life. It is real. And then you will begin to experience him. Are we together? So, uh, let's quickly read Jeremiah 9:24. Jeremiah 9:24. Okay, let me. Okay, let me.
Our time is up. I know it's, it's been a tough one getting through the study. We hope that God has sparked a flame in everyone's heart. So can we find a way to round up in the next 30 seconds? 30 seconds, let's round up. Hallelujah. Let's come together. Ancient words, ever true. Changing me, I'm changing you. We have come with open hearts. All that ancient words in power. Ancient words, ever true.